I will open up this meeting of the main planning board. Today's date is April eighth, two thousand twenty five and the time is seven oh six P M. Here in town hall, we have all six members of the planning board present. Please note, this meeting is being held in hybrid format, which means members of the public applicants and planning board members can participate here in town hall with the Zoom link. Virtually, and also note that this meeting is being recorded. Bill?
Yes.
Let's skip right on one minutes. And I believe you have an update for us on. The public hearing for seventy six powder mill road, but before we open the hearing, I believe you wanted to just brief the board on some of your observations.
Yeah, it's all confusing, so I put together a PowerPoint presentation and explained where we're at, and it will help the board sort everything out, I believe. I think probably the best thing to do would be maybe if everybody, if, sorry, with the board, if we introduce who we have in the audience so we can associate with. Through the properties and I'll run over the properties while you're, if you don't mind, if I could ask you all, and Cynthia is our translator, right, and that's going to help. Thank you for coming with such short notice. And I think you know, if I can ask all of you just, is it all right, Mr. Chair?
Can we first introduce the translator and have her be on record, please, first?
Oh, sorry.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Rue and I'm a Spanish interpreter.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Okay, and who's just going?
Hello, my name is Dino Camarté.
And we have applicant for the.
Oh, the.
My name is Nelson Marquez and I am the.
And here's a family member of an applicant.
Hi, I'm Said Borgani. I'm the landlord of the location, basically, the seventy six powder mill group, which consists of. Seventy six A, seventy six and seventy seven B. Basically, there are three. Business.
Hello, my name is. I work with.
My name is Maria Mendoza.
My name is Omar. I'm here for the seventy six A and seventy six police car dealership or special permit.
Thank you, Omar.
Okay, thank you, everybody. So I was just gonna want to give this a short presentation to the board. Just so that we know what we're talking about. The co-ops here, of course, and we've, we've, you've all permitted these businesses of one version and other. Stuff, but the new difference is that we have seventy six A, which remains by PAX here. And seventy six and seventy six B are now divided. This is a new development that you have not seen, so I want to make sure everyone understood, because it gets confusing with all the seventy sixes. Seventy six B will be the new. Subdivision there of the building. Tonight's.
Bill, Bill tonight's question?
Sure.
Seventy six and seventy six B are both part of that same building structure, just divided.
Correct, there's been a wall.
East to west, essentially, left to right on this figure?
I think, actually, I don't have any.
Yes, yes, basically, there is doors, the folk, folk garage doors and the paintings. The, from the east side, you see two car bays and the office, and then from the back, you're gonna see another two garage doors and the paint booth. It's always been separated. There's a, there is a passing true, like an emergency door, but it's always been that way. And it does have separate meters since it was always built, so.
So, in seventy six A currently is by PAX, you said, seventy six powder mill was. In the past, you had a special permit you issued for. Just leave this auto by the parashop. Now that special permit is, the business is no longer there, a new business coming in. This is, I'm not, I don't have all the story here, but I'm sure it'll come out, but I. I think, and I want to speak for owner or for Said, but I think there's, they're looking at a lease. From for seventy six to biopex, full biopex to expand, different, nothing to do with tonight's permitting. And then seventy six B is what the board will be hearing when we open the hearing, and that's regarding this location.
Which is only on the rear of the building.
That's right. So I just, I thought that would be helpful, kind of show you what we're talking about. Now, the current situation, the status of each. Because I asked everybody to come in, I appreciate all of you coming in, and I, it's been. Trying to get everything on track and make sure that everything works the way it's supposed to, but, so everybody has come tonight that was asked to come. The big issues we have right now that are not part of the public hearing, but are part of this board's jurisdiction, that we're just, I just want to. Let me understand these certain chances. Seventy six A, biopex has exceeded the, you've authorized thirty eight vehicles. They have access to vehicles for sale that have migrated to seventy six powder mill. And that's why I mentioned about the lease signed, this report in progress, but they are, they access to thirty eight vehicles. Additionally. We have a outstanding condition of a strike that is. The board has directed to be placed in between seventy six and seventy six A to kind of just provide a. Area of reference for the board. That was not completed. I think based on, I spoke to the applicant, I understand that somebody at the board. Expect sign, to be in compliance. I went out there with the building commissioner, who's been, we've made a number of trips out the last couple of weeks, and the building commissioner. Based on what goes on tonight, will, can begin issuing citations where needed. So that's seventy six A at the moment, seventy six. As far as I'm concerned, it's not officially a business. And now, but if for the auto sales, if that's what they want to do. And there are vehicles currently parked out front of it for sale, I guess, for sale. They will need a special permit, which would be a separate, nothing to do with this tonight. The building commissioner has agreed that. Depending on what the circumstances are tonight, but that there's a potential of being able to use the property. In the event that a special permit is filed by a certain day with this office to obtain a special permit, and the understanding it's not a guarantee. That's just a discussion that took place, that is a possibility. Okay, the third situation is the overall property, and that is why I asked Said coming, I guess, Said, as you recall, was originally. The automobile dealer for biopexes now, and so essentially. Easy to clarify the status of the property and the. Vehicles on the property that may or may not be associated with other businesses on there. But to be clear, and just so we know everybody understands this, the building commissioner. And I just met at length and discussed this, but. Vehicles that are not personal vehicles are not associated with the business on the site, cannot be stored. Or it's not a parking lot, or, and it cannot be used as that or for storage, so just to be clear, that's. The issue here. That. I don't know what the number of vehicles has resulted from exactly, that's something we'll have to sort out, if not sort out and just say fix it. But regardless, that fact is something that the board needs to be aware of. And then.
Are you talking about vehicles in working condition?
I don't know. I know there's some that are being worked on, and I don't know who they belong to. And I don't, and then, just one second, I'll switch this last one, then, then I'm done. It's not a long presentation. And then the fourth issue, we're gonna talk about this property, is seventy six B is requesting a special. For the auto body repair. Okay, so that's where we're at now. So I just wanted to start with that, and I'll leave this, but leave this up in case we want for reference.
Okay, thanks, Bill. For the board, any questions on the identity of the property and the designations of seventy six A and B? Is that clear to everybody?
Do we have a boundary of the property?
I can pull it off. A, just like a, like a boundary, a perimeter boundary?
Yeah.
Yes. I have one and I have a new one, and I changed slightly with the road, but it really did, so.
Is there any business currently in seventy six? In seventy six, just seventy six?
Yes, yes.
So there's Apex and seventy six A?
Apex is in seventy six as well.
Seventy six as well.
What will that especially?
You need to pull up a.
What if, actually, what if there's a survey or something?
Yeah, that's what I have. I do have a survey. We just want to go ahead for one second, I'll pull the survey out.
Yeah. Okay, let's, um. Owner, may I ask you some questions, please?
Absolutely.
As we understand, town, town staff noted that there are more cars on the property than were allowed by the special permit on seventy six A. Do you understand that?
We need, so. Initially, we allowed thirty eight cars for the seventy six A, so that was in the business on the seventy six. Powder mill road, and then essentially they moved out and we end up signing a new lease and just growing the business to seventy six A. Last time we checked, there was like a fifty three cars, that's what they told me, a couple of cars, you know, to the customers, they would pay the cost. So I believe on the side, there was a forty nine car, which is thirty five, thirty seven was on the mission side from the. Seventy six A powder mill side, and the other one was just parked in front of the seventy six, which they are all working condition. And they just told me, so no any work has been done, we just parked the cars there.
One thing for the board to understand, the seventy six. Where the applicant is actually in process of getting it ready for his business app, is auto. Dealership as well. So it's basically, he's taking an extra space just to have the front there. It's the whole parking lot, the whole lot is automating. Zoned. So having said that, he needs to obviously file for the special application to get it squared away. But nevertheless, it is also another license assigned to the seventy six as well for.
There's no special permit for seventy six currently. The property is zoned for auto dealership if you only receive a special permit. Well, so seventy six needs a special permit?
We do have a license for that from the town.
No. No, there's no special permit granted to seventy six.
Never, but at the same time, these guys are just starting to transition, basically.
And we want to support businesses expanding, but we need to have a special permit on seventy six. So, owner, you need to get the car numbers down on seventy six A to the proper amount, okay? We need to have the line that's established on the backside of the property.
Twenty feet from the office, just going down the middle, and the purpose of that is to delineate the.
Yep, so we need those, the card numbers down to the, what is it, thirty eight that are left in seventy six A?
Thirty.
There are thirty.
Thirty eight. So we need thirty eight, you cannot exceed thirty eight on seventy six A. You need to put the line on the back of the property. And are those the only two corrective actions required?
Now, again, you heard my earlier comment, but the building commissioner had.
Building commissioner can make whatever determination he wants.
Right.
We're not here.
Right.
To say that's, that's the building commissioners.
That's exactly right, right.
So we're just hoping to send a special permit, though, as you, as you said just now, you want to expand to seventy six, you will need to file a special permit. And then have propose a car number, car amount for seventy six. Understand?
Okay, what I recommend, and I think I mentioned this to owner earlier, but what I think. Current special app, permit application should come in and read it.
Okay, I already have everything written.
Okay, yeah, it's, so that, that's good, so we can get it in tomorrow.
And what did the building commissioner say specifically?
The only commissioner said, in his jurisdiction.
He would not.
But that he would, if there's a special permit on file and ready for a hearing. That he would not consider it a violation, a code violation until the hearing date comes place. Now, in other words, that. And that's up to him. I mean, you'd want to probably double check with him, but that was.
My advice to you is to get that special permit application in fast, and the building commissioner is being very, very nice about this. He has the authority and the right to close you down at seventy six and have all your cars in it. So he's being, he's being very lenient, and so I suggest you move fast if that's what you want to do. Understood?
If, yeah, I also want to be clear, if it's filed, a permit is filed for a special permit for seventy six. It doesn't mean this board blesses it. It's gotta go through the hearing and they have to decide that. So if for some reason the board, there's, that's that, okay? So that.
So if there's, if the board has any other questions or comments, I'm fine with dismissing seventy six A on this. We don't need to talk about it any further. Does anyone have any other comments or questions on seventy six A?
Only to the landlord, here's on the lease lines.
Okay. Fair enough.
Okay.
Is that what we can discuss now?
Next, I would say, I think my recommendation would be.
Before we do that, so any other questions from the board on seventy six A? Do you have any other questions for us that we could help with now? Please reach out if you do.
Maybe touch base tomorrow.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Bill, with the, the proper. The parcel designation of these lines, if you could.
I'm sorry, oh, yeah, yeah, okay. So I have two, I have two illustrations or two.
Are you sharing that?
Not yet. I'm gonna decide what you want. I have that, and I have a, this, a. This was the original one, I think it came with. One of the applications, so. Has.
So that's one. But that's approximate.
Approximate, right, and here's the.
The other one's real?
Yeah, the other one's just survey. And what's interesting, you see how this is accurate, but it doesn't look it, because it's kind of like, it looks like what one's here, but it's. And we knew that because we measured this, the. Hundred eighty feet or whatever it is there, I do, so those are.
So these are the, so Bill, Bill, Chris Shaw's question was about lease lines.
Well, also, but I would like to understand the left-hand line touching the building edge. And if we can go to the aerial to understand it, that. Happened, so it looks like it touched. Where the building kicks out.
He's asking him to go to the aerial photo that had up earlier.
Oh, my, earlier?
Yeah, the P D M three on top.
This one?
No.
Yeah, I mean, if you zoom in, I guess.
Why, I, okay, what do you know?
I'm just trying. It looks like lines, right, touching whatever the building is.
You should share that, Bill.
Okay. So this line, this is the town property, the town. Access road to the tree plant.
Okay, so, yeah, can we? Hear from the landlord what the lease lines are? Where those properties are split up for the three parcels, or for three dependent parcels?
Mr. Borgani, would you be so kind to help us understand?
Well, the, the fact to the matter is, there are two separate buildings, and then there is really no physical line, but. The way the lease was written, if you compare the distance between the two buildings, if you put an imaginary line in between the two. Property, two structures, basically, that, that. Left, right side would be the bypass, and then the other side would be the garages, belonging, you know, all the cars go through the same path.
So Bill's gonna draw a line here, we're not gonna, this is, we're not gonna hold you to this line, we just want to have a general understanding.
Basically, it's like an imaginary line there.
So like that?
Yeah.
Straighter up.
Exactly, so that, you know, obviously cars go through, and that cannot be blocked.
Right.
Because, you know, it's the only access way for the cars to come and go, customers and everybody else.
And that goes all the way back to across the whole parking paid area in the back?
Exactly, exactly.
And the seventy six, seventy six B line goes right left, left and splits the building?
Very much. Basically, what you see in the back and to the left is where the body shop is, and I think that's why we're here tonight. If I'm not mistaken, Bill wants to. Had something, I don't know, the building inspector or the commissioner went by, and. They mentioned they had fewer, more cars than they should have, so I think they did comply, they, today I. Talked to them and they reduced the number of the cars, and they also had some body shop parts and accessories, auto parts that was. Piled up from the winter time, so they actually got rid of those. They cleaned up the back and basically to be in compliance.
Bill, can you approximate the line between seventy six B and seventy six?
I'm sorry, can I?
Can you draw a line between seventy six and seventy six B, and we get the landlord to confirm that's the split?
Yeah, he has a line right there.
Right here?
Open right there. Oh, in the, in, yeah, in the middle, there's another line, in the, in, inside the physical building, there is a line. It's only at an access door, and basically it's like a fire.
Is that line about right?
Just about, yeah. Yes.
Where's the spray booth?
Spray booth is actually the bump that you see on the left side of the building, that was, that's the bump, yeah.
So that really belongs to seventy six B, that seventy six?
Correct.
So there's sort of a jog down for the lease line?
True, that's true, okay, I got it. Thank you.
Other questions from board on this? All right, Bill. We can, we did not open the hearing.
No.
For seventy six B. Did we do that?
Wait, let's see. I think the first thing I would, I would like to do. Is just, you, you, you understand what the building commissioner is saying, that vehicles that are not associated with either business. Should not be stored or it should not be parked there. If it's a personal car, you understand, we, they understand that, but. There are cars there.
I think there, there is a conflict here, like there are certain number of cars that are basically being repaired. Or they have, have it like, obviously, with their own business, and then there's handful of the car. That still belonged to me from the previous, basically running the business, I think. These guys are still in process to take over the seventy six and basically do the paperwork and stuff, so we still do have a. Handful of the cars that is back there from the auto sales that I ran myself under the tire center. Where we had license from the town as well, but having said that, it's basically just a matter of time to, you know, we can't pay. Physical cars that left from a previous business home right now, so we basically, I think the town is one step ahead of us. These guys are still in process to do the paperwork to get the place established. We're trying to, we did, actually, there was a bunch of other things that we moved out of there, so there's handful of the cars that still there. These guys were a little bit over the number of the cars that they supposed to have, so today they reduced it, they cleaned up the place. So we're still basically, it's like a thing in motion, let's say.
I understand, and I, I, I want to be clear that the town wants these businesses all to succeed, the town wants used property ownership, and this board is. Wants you to succeed. But let's be clear, what we have right now, we have one business that has a special permit there. To sell vehicles, thirty eight vehicles, we have well in access to that, now we have a plan, right, we have a plan, but, but, but this board is dealing. That plan, okay, we have a plan that hopefully should lead to success, okay? Secondly, we have a business that now is there that's not supposed to be, yeah, okay? But when it is a permitted business, based on the past. Special permits, it's allowed fifteen vehicles, okay, we have, we have, well, we probably have thirty vehicles in the back. Probably, I was, I mean, I was in there quite a bit. And lastly, if there are vehicles that need to be removed that are part, or going to be. Part of biopex's sales or whatever, okay, then that should be explained, but what should not be there? And what should be clear is that there should not be vehicles not associated with either business. Store there, park there, or abandoned, and that, that absolutely is against what the bylaws say. And, and, and we want to help you work this out, but we done, and I mean, I don't think the board needs photos of what, you know, the situation are, and I've been over there, and I do appreciate the effort. I know it's difficult, open a business, and I, I understand that, and that. But it's also difficult to run a town as a volunteer, and that's what we're asking these people to do, and so we want to work together and make.
It's all up to you, but just want to clarify, that basically, these folks actually did clean up, and they.
Yes, I did.
Today, they just got into it, because I think there was a misunderstanding, but they did put some effort at least, didn't they?
I said it.
To be in line with what you're asking.
Okay, appreciate.
Just, just so we're clear, there's only one special permit that's been issued for that property. There should not be any other business activity occurring until those special permits have been issued. And there hasn't been, so there hasn't been a special permit for the auto body shop, there hasn't been a special permit for any type of other car storage behind the auto body shop. And there hasn't been a special permit for vehicle sales in front of the auto body shop, so all of that should not be occurring. The town, I, from my point of view, is, is being very lenient about this and allowing you some time to figure it out. Not every town would do that.
Right.
Right, other towns would shut you down and starting to issue fines every day until the situations change. They're trying their best, so we need you guys to understand that, okay?
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Okay.
But having said that, um, the body shop, they do have registered with the state. I mean, I, I'm correct.
Sure, they might, yes, I, I don't know what they have registered to the state, I believe that.
No, I mean, I, I, I just, they, the folks, uh, I thought they were actually in compliance with the permits. Um, they do have a federal, uh, ID. And they also have a state license, and they also registered with the town. They also basically have the wife who runs the office, and this is the husband, the couple. Um, she's actively working every day.
So a- all of that, those are licenses?
Uh-huh.
Right, and that's what is needed is a special permit from the town of Maynard, that's what's missing.
What's missing?
That's what's missing.
Okay.
And that's what we're gonna talk about next, when, when we're gonna open up the public hearing. For the per, for the special permit.
I just want to understand.
Um, Cynthia, I'm gonna, you, you can clarify all you want, okay?
Yeah, thank you, I'm, I'm.
Any questions?
Yeah, but I just ask you something.
Any questions, Cynthia?
No, she's, she was.
The special permit that Chris is talking about, that Cher is talking about, is special permit from this board, the plan.
Correct. One question, yes.
Yes, hello, I want to ask you, uh, for a special permit, seventy-six powder mill. Um, probably, I have all the documents ready, probably I'm just gonna turn them in tomorrow and be gonna start the process. I think until next hearing, everything should be all right from my side. Until then, I have about ten cars in there. So whatever you say, if you want me to move them, I can move them to my other dealer, but. It's hard, it's not that easy, especially.
That, that will be up to the building commissioner.
Right, right.
Whatever they say, I just, I just asked before, and we don't have much activities going on there.
Yep.
They're all clean and then we just try to keep the area professional for my reputation, and also for the area, for the.
So, and I understand, and, and the town, we understand that?
Mm-hmm.
That is not in this board's purview?
Absolutely.
So the, the board, that, um, what I can tell you is that this board has spoken. And it's up to the building commissioner to enforce it. Um, I relay the conversation I had earlier, and I think we can straighten it out tomorrow. Get the permit in, and the application for the permit in, okay?
So this one, I must, if I turn everything in tomorrow, should I, should I still move all the cars tomorrow?
That's not to this board, that, that, that's what they're telling, they give you, what they're, they're.
I think tomorrow, when you turn in your special permit application, that's a good conversation to have with Bill. Who has had conversations with the building inspector.
Or Steve, Steve as well, right here. Steve Silverstein, uh, here is the director of one. Executive Director of office. Um, okay, so that's, we understand, um.
So, hold on, I, so I know town government can be a little confusing, we issue special permits. Bill Nemzer, town planner, and the building commissioner Rick Asman, they enforce those permits. Right, if you have a permit, it gets enforced by them. If you don't have a permit, the building commissioner, it's his enforcement. From, from that point on. Okay, so you don't, for seventy-six, you do not have a special permit with us yet, right? So that's why it's the building commissioner, it's his job to decide what enforcement will look like. So that's why I can't tell you to move the cars or not.
And then I answer to them, if the cars aren't moved. I have to tell them what, that's why, sorry.
All right, um, anything else on the board before I open up the public hearing for seventy-six B? Current site conditions, anything else?
Okay. Uh, only if, um, I, I, just a question about the, the, um. You understand, at the moment, though, we have, regardless of whose cars they are, there is an abundance of cars on the site, so.
Right, the question is, do the current conditions inform our discussions about seventy-six B?
About seventy-six B, right.
Well, we should open up the hearing to discuss seventy-six.
Okay, so is there anything else before I, um, no?
Okay, unless, okay. Um. Owner, you're welcome to stay, um, as far as I'm concerned, uh, our discussions are now complete for today, but it's your choice, okay?
Yeah, thank you so much.
All right, I will open up the public hearing, no, hold on, Bill, this says seventy-six Powder Mill. So it's for seventy-six Powder Mill.
Well, it's gonna be.
Because that's what the actual property designation is.
Yeah, well, the whole thing is seventy-six, okay.
But we're referring.
We're gonna refer to seventy-six B, and, and, yeah, and this is, that was done before I realized that it was.
Got it, I will open up the public hearing for seventy-six Powder Mill Road, this is an application filed by. I did, Dean, Dean Orca Marte, did I get that correct?
Yes.
Is it Dean Orca?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um. This is a request for a special permit to operate a motor vehicle repair business. Uh, located at seventy-six Powder Mill Road, and will be referred to as seventy-six B Powder Mill Road through this discussion. Um, Bill, I, I, I believe you have a staff report, but can you just give us an overview of the special permit?
Yeah, yes, and also, um, you had a presentation if you, if you wanted, no, okay. Um, the overview is, um, I think we pretty much gone, uh, a, a, on road. Repair or.
Motor vehicle repair business.
Right, right, is, um, with the previous. Occupant of that space had, and the applicant is essentially, uh, moving into the, uh, same location. Outside, but inside half of the. Square footage for that. Um. The previous conditions, I, I did think it would be a help to have the. Previous special permit handy, which I did, I have it, if the board wants to see it, so to see, and see kind of the. How the conversation went and, and the decision came down, um. And, um. All other, everything else aside that we discussed earlier, um, I don't see any, uh. Um, any real difference from the previous applicant with that space.
I have a couple procedural items first before we get into the discussion. Um, this is a public hearing, and so there's some things that are required, so forgive us, um, as we proceed. Um, but I'm gonna need you to just identify yourself with a record.
Um.
Then you can just say, you, you're just your name.
Sorry, I'm nervous.
It's okay.
Good afternoon, um, my name is Dean Orca Marte, and I'm here to present. Um, a new business for auto body shop located on seventy-six Powder Mill Road.
Thank you, that's good, it's just for the, we have a record, we need people to identify themselves properly. Um, Ms. Marte, we have a translator here tonight for English, a train, English, Spanish translator, do you? Would you prefer us to, to translate into English, Spanish tonight?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um, do you understand everything I've said thus far? Okay. Um, so I'm, I'm going to, I'll get to you in a minute, but I'm going to defer to you to translate as we get through some of this, okay?
Hey, Chris, and one other thing, I'm, I apologize, I shouldn't brought this up earlier, the applicant did, uh, provide any application. Going through and knowing a, um, a, um, justification statement here. And provided a, um, um. Depiction of how we, like, would work, one difference that, uh. Won't work, um, without what means, but is, and I think we discussed this, um. I, I think I discussed with the applicant, but. Um, it is a proposal for an English, or actually, agress, uh, following to the town property. Uh, which this, that can, uh, work, so that has to be rectified.
You work well, friends, I think.
Yeah.
Look, allow me, um. The, the site plan that you, that you drew here on the application, Bill, can you bring it up, please?
This is the map that you have admitted in the, in the application. Ingress.
This shows cars entering from the main entrance.
The, the other one, Bill.
Which is here?
Not this one?
Correct.
There's another.
Oh, yeah.
And then it shows vehicles exiting.
Yeah, that one, there.
To the, to the left side of the building, and then down that other path, is correct?
Correct.
Cynthia, this, this here, this is public, that, that, that belongs to the town of Maynard. And from my understanding. To use the town of Maynard right of way, uh, the, let me start again. Um, from my understanding, to use the town of Maynard driveway that belongs to the town of Maynard. The applicant would need to get, uh, to, to work out an agreement with the town. At what's called an easement for, for the town. And so for. For you to use the property, for you to use that drive, that driveline. Um. You would need to go to, to get approval from the Maynard Select Board.
And what is the name again of that?
The Select Board. And that, the agreements will need to be a legal agreement. And our, the lawyers from the town of Maynard, we need to sign off on that. The planning board cannot approve the use of town property. Bill Nemzer and Steve Silverstein will both help you out if this is what you want to do. Um, Ms. Marte, do you have any questions?
So, so far, until that's time, the customers have to use the same entrance to leave the property.
Yeah, that's the only driveway on the site, but yes.
The reason also is this board could not agree with the plan that allowed for that. For the use of town property, so that's why we can't. Um, Mr. Borgoni, um, one, just one second, please, let me get through this first. Um. One option for you is to change the plan. And show that cars only go in and out here. And that is something that we can approve. And then. Later, you can go and try to get approval from the town. If you get approval, you come back to us, and then we can approve the whole thing.
Uh, that sounds that like something that I would like to pursue, and if that's okay, then I will be coming tomorrow. And asking Bill and Steve to help me to do that.
Um, to clarify, you, uh, Ms. Marte. Um, to clarify, Ms. Marte, are you saying you're going to come tomorrow to Bill and Steve? To change this plan so that it only shows entering and exiting here?
Al, al inicio de su plan?
No.
Que si, que si usted va a venir a hacer ese cambio inicial de usar esa entrada y salida. Y ya después, uh, usted va a solicitar ante la otra junta que le otorguen el permiso para usar. La calle que es de la ciudad de Maynard para usar la, the, the acceso de salida.
El día de hoy solo van a probar para, para esa entrada.
Mm-hmm.
So, so.
Es, es lo que, que podemos confirmar entonces que así vas a. Yes, um, I will be using that road as an entrance and exit. And then later on, I'm gonna, uh, request the help of Stephen Bill to do the other process.
Great. Um, so we're going to have to continue for that reason, for sure. I want to, I'm, I'm almost there, almost there, uh, we're gonna need to continue, of course. Um. And I'll turn it over to the board for other, we can talk through other items too, right, but.
Yeah, I, I, um.
Well, let's do that, we'll, okay, Mr. Borgoni, please, good, but for, so, now that we're in the hearing, I'm gonna need you to, to identify yourself, please.
I'm excited, Borgoni, um, um, the owner of the property. Um, having said that, the property was established, uh, nineteen fifty-six. Over fifty-sixty years ago, and that easement, it's not a town property, it's actually an easement. And it's been, always been used during the past sixty-five years. So according to the law, I believe, it says that has been established, so they don't really need a special permit. Um, for driving over something that has been there all along. It's a, it's a, it is an access road, it is an easement for the town, in fact, the town. Um, had a land law that requires that to be able to access their land. But having said that, that was the easement that has been there for past at least six years on the record.
Are, are you saying that you are the property owner of that driveway?
No, it's an easement.
He started a prescriptive easement.
It is built that way, it was designed that way, it's an emergency. It is built that way, it was designed that way, it's an emergency exit and it is.
So you're saying that you have an easement for that driveline?
The town, the town acquired the easement because they had the land law to access their lot, so they basically put an easement, which I have the documents.
So, so who owns the property then?
The town owns the property.
Okay, so we need it, so we need to clarify this. If you could be so kind, Mr. Borgani.
Yes, sir.
Um, second, second.
I'm just gonna.
Sí, yo sé que usted entendió, pero no más lo voy a aclarar porque pues se está grabando que yo estoy interpretando esto, ¿verdad? Esa, esa carretera comenta el dueño de la propiedad que en algún momento ya se declaró que podía ser utilizada de sentido común para los negocios alrededores, ya que ese negocio tiene más de ciento cincuenta años. Siendo una propiedad privada, pero tiene sesenta y cinco años el uso de este tipo de comercio, entonces el gobierno de, de Maynard en algún momento otorgó el permiso ese acceso como acceso común. Entonces, por eso él está diciendo que no ve la necesidad de que se haga esto que usted le están proponiendo como prioridad.
Mr. Borgani, if you could be so kind and work with Bill to provide the documents that you said you have, so that he can review.
Yeah, I'm sure the town has the copy because, um, well, this was drawn by the town.
And it is possible and we will check, we will check that. However, if the burden is on the applicant.
I do, I have it on fine.
So, so I, I will do that. But that doesn't mean I'm gonna go, you know, for the next month digging this up. I, I'll check with our Department of Public Works and our records and I'll check the tax records. But see what you have.
But one thing for sure, the town knows that driveway has been there for the past sixty years. There's not nothing new.
I'm not, I'm not disputed.
I think the question is if it is town-owned land.
Yeah.
You're stating that your property has an easement already to use the driveway.
Yes, the way this was designed from the get-go, to be able for the property to access, it, it, it's built.
Okay.
So since it's been sixty years, it's grandfathered in.
Okay.
So meaning, you know, there is no special permit or requirement for applicant to pursue.
That, that makes, that makes sense if that.
They like this for the sixty years it's been there and I can show you the law, then I think she's ready to go for this.
We will need to have this clarified. Um, hold on, Cynthia, could you please translate all that?
Entonces, eh, como el dueño del lugar está diciendo que usted no tendría por qué estar atravesando por el proceso de solicitar permiso para transitar en esa, eh, carretera como acceso de salida para su negocio, supuesto que el gobierno de Maynard ya debería tener un antecedente de que es un acceso común. Entonces, está solicitando que el permiso se le dé ya de una vez, sin necesidad de que usted tenga que hacer todo ese proceso.
Okay, now, to summarize this, the town staff has told us that that is town property. The property owner of your parcel tells us that there's an easement here. And we need this clarified before we can vote for approval. So, Mr. Chairman, can I have that translated first?
Entonces, nosotros basándonos en el hecho de que el, la junta de planeación estaba solicitando la, este, que solicitaran permiso especial a la ciudad de Maynard. Pero como el señor dueño de la propiedad está diciendo que ya se cuenta con un permiso de uso común en esa carretera, entonces está solicitando que se aclare y que haya una clarificación de ese permiso que comenta el dueño para, eh, darle el permiso de salida.
The caveat to that would be to approve the plan as presented. This would not, this work could still go on were a revised plan that showed a single ingress and egress. That's the difference. So in other words, if, the, the paper trail that we would need to be established is only for using that road. And if, in the meantime, if the applicant wishes, that's what I'm saying, they can.
I'm, I'm not going to, I will not support this right now until this is clarified.
Yeah.
The, the access road.
Oh, right, yeah.
So that, but I will support a site plan that only uses this.
That's one side, right?
Yeah, so again, your other option, just to summarize, is to have this only be entering and exiting here only. That we can approve.
Entonces, lo que se puede aprobar hoy mismo es que este acceso que está a la derecha de su negocio se use como entrada y salida, eso lo podemos nos aprobar.
And if you want to then change and add this later, if the property owner, I'm not saying you're not wrong, I'm not saying you're wrong.
That's only used for emergencies because customers don't even, like, you can't even.
I don't believe it's paved, is it?
It is paved, it is paved, it is connected, it is, um, you know, being there.
If, later on, you can make this change later if you choose.
Si usted desea, usted puede hacer esas modificaciones en este acceso de salida, si usted lo desea.
Okay, I will turn it over to the board for any other comments or questions on this.
About what?
Um, the application.
Um, just something I would wanna see in the, when we, um, look at this in the next meeting, I'd like to see an updated site plan that defines the boundaries of the leased area. Just, if it's in the record.
Can you translate that?
Eh, one last question.
That, you know how Bill was drawing on the map the boundaries of the lease splits? If that could be presented before the next meeting so that it can be part of the record?
Eh, ellos están comentando que quieren que el, las limitaciones del territorio que corresponde a su negocio y a los otros negocios alrededores del dueño de la propiedad completa se pueden mostrar dentro de la aplicación.
You understand?
Yes, le queda claro esa parte.
Other comments or questions from the board?
Bill, did you say there was a, a previous special purpose?
I did. Would you like to say it?
Yeah, different business. Yeah, I, I was just saying.
Same type of business and same partially.
Oh, I meant a different LLC business.
Oh, yes.
Okay, um, so this was the, this was done in, uh, in January twenty twenty-three.
Bill, can you share that? Sorry.
I can, I'm, I'm one viewer.
I'm that guy, should I?
I'm one viewer, Bill, though. You're right.
Oh, well, still.
All right, we're recording.
Yeah.
Exciting. Um, okay, so this was approved in, uh, January twenty twenty-three. I want to mix with it. And I don't recall any conversation about easement, I don't think that was proposed. He was, um, here are the conditions that, actually, three of you are still there, it's good.
So can we talk a little bit about those conditions and whether they might still be appropriate?
Yes, since it's the same site and the same use, well, slightly different site, right? Because it's half of the space.
The, the reason that.
But, you know.
It's too, too less big.
Similar effect. Um, I think it would be relevant to review the previous special permit without conditions.
Cynthia, could you translate that, please?
Eh, quieren escuchar como las requerimientos que se encondían en el anterior permiso que se estaba utilizando en ese mismo local comercial por ser el mismo giro comercial que usted está solicitando el día de hoy.
Bill, would you mind just summarizing these conditions one by one and then I'll have Cynthia translate them?
Sure. The first condition was this, the, the original special permit was to be eighteen months. This board can stipulate like the time they want. In this case, it was eighteen months.
En el caso de ese permiso anterior, eh, la fecha de renovación del permiso era de dieciocho meses.
And then after that, renewal.
O sea, era un permiso por dieciocho meses y después de eso una renovación.
Um, at the time, we wanted the property marked stakes and iron bars, I think is what we were gonna use, and we, after site visits, realized that for a number of reasons, that didn't seem to be practical when, um, the idea was to keep vehicles off of, in, in the end, it was to keep vehicles on impervious surfaces. And the boundary, um, at the time was marked mistakes. There was a question about, uh, at the time, I think the co-op was doing work over there and, and things as well.
Um, okay, let's skip that comment right now. Cynthia, you're welcome to translate, but that's irrelevant.
Eh, está tratando bien de comentarles a ellos que en aquellos momentos que se solicitó este permiso especial se solicitaba que para marcar el territorio correspondiente de ese negocio estuviera marcado como con estacas para limitar los límites de la propiedad.
Well, the second item is no cars shall be parked on property.
One other thing I, I never want, the, the, the question was about, there was a concern about cars being over a town property and, and, right.
Y una de las condiciones era también que evitar que los, eh, carros pertenecientes al negocio que solicitó el permiso estuvieran estacionados en propiedad de la ciudad.
Um, the, the, the third condition, uh, was that no more than fifteen cars should be parked within the space behind the building or is leased. And that's what, uh, Mr. Crouch I asked for is, um, would, that is another reason I would help to have the leasing, the leased area in on a, a plan.
And, y es por eso que el señor Bill Prash ya estaba preguntando acerca de las limitantes del territorio y quería ver imágenes del reverso del edificio porque decía ahí que no más de quince automóviles pueden estar estacionados en, eh, en el lote trasero.
Condition four here, this is, this has been a little bit of a problem and we're talking about this. The idea is they should be within seventy-five feet from the building's rear, no further than that. The idea is to protect the rear. But cars should only be parked on impervious surface, meaning that, I don't know how impervious travels with, with pavement, asphalt. Yeah, pavement, so that if there was leaking, it would not go into the water. Um, the cars as of today are not on impervious surface, really. They're still, they have to be on impervious surface.
En esa, en ese apartado ahí comentan acerca de que el se, se solicitaba que los carros estuvieran estacionados setenta y cinco pies fuera de el, el edificio. Pero luego se cayó en cuenta, ¿verdad?, que, eh, los carros querían evitar, primero que nada asegurar la seguridad del lugar. Pero después se, se denotó que no toda el área exterior trasera está pavimentada y era importante que estuviera pavimentado, los carros estuvieron en la superficie pavimentada para evitar que el boteo de cualquier tipo de material que pudiera salir de los automóviles entrara o se filtrara hacia la tierra o las, el agua.
And then, condition five, Bill?
Um, condition five was a manager plan to explain how you would address a spill, a chemical spill, the, 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 the. That's the concern here. Now, since we've done this, and I'll have to ask the board for clarification on this, but we were in conjunction with the fire department on, um, one for the last one, three day.
Eh, otra de las, de los, el quinto es fue que hubiera una explicación o un plan, eh, que ofreciera a ellos una solución o una respuesta de qué hacer en caso de que hubiera algún boteo o derrame de algún tipo de, de químico.
Bueno, yo sí le ha dicho que trabajaría el departamento de bombero. Yo que se me iba a traer de la red, lo tenía en la misma mano, en caso de emergencia, probablemente debería hacer eso. Y también ya me dejó el departamento de I D, y me dieron el tiempo de ello, y también me dieron la información de cómo accionar para, para cuando algo te pasa.
Um, I wanna mention about that, that I went to the fire department and I asked them about, um, a plan of what to do in case of an accident or serving, eh, chemicals exposed, uh, in the, in the area. And they, they already answered and they said that they will send me the instruct, the detailed instructions of what to do. And I also went to EPA and they also told me that they will send me the instructions, a sign of what to do in case of an emergency of those.
Thank you.
Do you understand these previous conditions?
Le queda claro usted esas condiciones previas de la anterior permiso, yes.
Do you have any questions about them?
Tiene alguna pregunta en específico a eso?
No, lo único concern que yo tenía era el vivero, pero como ya le falta el de policía, le falta el de bombero, no hay otra información, so.
Eh, my only concern was that there's water, um, very near the property, but I already went to the fire department and they told me exactly what to do, they gave me instructions and, uh, the requirements that I have to accomplish with that.
We will, all cars, if, if we issue special permit, we would need to see all cars on pavement only. No cars allowed on dirt, on grass, on anything else.
Eh, de manera que si otorgamos nosotros el permiso especial para usted, no queremos ver ningún tipo de automóvil estacionado en área que no esté pavimentada. Es decir, eh, pasto o tierra.
And the cars will need to stay close to the building. Here we said seventy-five feet from the building. We will talk about that more, but we don't want cars getting close to the building.
En, en algún momento también se especificó que fueran setenta y cinco pies de separación del edificio. Podemos ampliar esa conversación y podemos hablar más al respecto de eso, no necesariamente le están diciendo que van a ser setenta y cinco. Simplemente no quieren carros estacionados en un área que no esté pavimentada.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Did you get your questions?
Yeah, I guess, one more, I'm, I understand the, one of the special permit criteria is its impacts on the natural environment. I, I'm just curious, is there any sort of stormwater management system at all on the property now? And I understand the idea is the cars would park on paved surfaces so that it doesn't, anything that comes off the cars doesn't go right into the ground, but if it goes onto the pavement and then it rains and then the pavement runoff goes into the river, it kind of defeats the purpose. So I, I guess one thing that doesn't, isn't clear from the site plan or anything like that is what's, I guess what is being done to, to limit the impacts to the river being so close.
Can, can we ask the, the property owner?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Mr. Borgani, do you have any storm drains on property?
Like, um, I'm actually in process to open a garage in the snow, the old gas station downtown. So by law, um, we have to go, uh, what is required. So the new constructions like, uh, he mentioned, it requires that, but the older constructions, none of them do and none of them.
We're not, we're not here to.
We don't have.
We're not here, we're not gonna make you do anything, we're asking what the current. We're not here, we're not gonna make you do anything, we're asking what the current condition is. Are there storm drains on the property right now? So there's no drain, there's no drain structures, there's, there's no catch basins, there's nothing.
Nothing basically on the property.
It's just pavement.
Just pavement, exactly.
Well, Bill, I seem to recall that Conservation Commissioner, maybe Conservation Agent addressed that issue with the last time. We might find something useful in the whole minutes, but I, I think it came up last time and I think there was a response there.
I do believe that, I'm remembering what Bill's saying, that for one of the previous applicants, I feel like I've seen a lot of special permit applications for this property. There was a conversation with the Conservation Agent, maybe in conjunction with the spill plan from the fire department to address concerns over, you know, any.
They need to have a kit, which is all the gas stations also do have like the sand barrel and, you know, the spillage chemical, it's not a chemical, it's, it's actually an agent that absorbs all the oil and if there's a, in case of a spill. Having said that, they, they have to be obviously in line with EPA and the fire department. Whatever recommendation they have, they have to apply and they must basically comply. But other than that, from the, in fact, this property, like I said, it's, it's so old. Even the environmental protection, we had this discussion. It only applies to the new construction built after certain years.
Yeah.
So having said that, given the setback from the river, because the pavement goes all the way to the well, the river is actually, has a big drop and then there's also, you can walk through the river. Unlike the co-op, the water actually turns and comes behind the building, but ours is actually, has a huge setback, it's still you can walk at least fifty feet before you get into the water. Having said that, the driveway is paved and, you know, basically that's what the lease also that we gave them, that they can only park underneath the pavement. And other than that, that
Let's pause Cynthia, if you wanna catch up, the applicant on.
Yeah, this, see, again, claro, okay. Let's be a chief.
Okay.
So, Bill, I think we're mixing up stormwater and spills, so do you have the stormwater issue information available for the next meeting?
You mean the answer to what was, what Jeff asked?
Yeah. Just, you know, rain, water, pavement, crap.
I, my memory from.
I know it's gonna dress, so just, we need it into this hearing.
Oh, yes. I, I think that the seventy-five foot, you know, our condition of only having cars parked within seventy-five feet from the back of the building was part of that, the thought that that also contains literally where the, some of the runoff, I don't know, it confines it, I guess.
Right, but also make a note that this property was tested and actually before even I take over with the EPA and basically came up with the clean bill of files. So, which is actually is good that, you know, over the years hasn't been like problematic.
What else from the board?
So regarding the, the old conditions, item four was the seventy-five foot setback on the building face or rear face. I think that's still appropriate here, although I think the boundary needs to be a hard defined boundary, so I think it needs like Jersey barriers on that seventy-five foot line. I think that would be very helpful, but I like the seventy-five.
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah. She, she wants to make another comment about this possible leakage of chemicals or whatever from the cars. And she's saying that basically the, this is a body shop mostly, so they are not gonna be repairing cars there. Or the, the cars that are gonna be parked there are basically just to purchase there or be like a client of the body shop. There's not gonna be any chemi, like chemicals in the outside of the business. Could manage, management of chemicals.
Thank you.
And then, Bill, one of the other conditions was the fifteen cars. And it morphed to cars and parts of cars and other accessories and things, so I'm curious what the board is thinking for, you know, would be appropriate condition regarding you know, at least the body parts and what defines a car, I guess, and what else could be outside.
To simplify that, what we don't want is fifteen cars and then fifteen other half cars or parts, you know, right?
Right, yeah, I mean, there's a big part file sitting there for twelve months.
So, did you translate that?
Eh, básicamente ellos quieren delimitar que no solamente es que no se puedan, o sea, se limite a no estacionar quince carros, sino que también la limitante es que no haya otro tipo de artefactos. Por ejemplo, llantas o partes de carros o medios carros en el territorio correspondiente a su negocio.
I'm, I'm just guessing, that also has to do with the eighteen month, the previous special permit had an eighteen month recall. Perhaps we can be more descriptive, saying that we would like a visit. Be, you know, like maybe from the building inspector or something before the eighteen month re-up of the special permit. Just to make sure that everything is actually, you know, the number of cars is actually correct and those other things, that all the conditions are being met.
También podríamos agregar al apartado que diga que si aunque el permiso sea otorgado por dieciocho meses existe la posibilidad que uno de nuestros inspectores visite su negocio antes de esos dieciocho meses para asegurarnos de que usted está cumpliendo con los requisitos eh, pos, posteriormente delimitados como por ejemplo la presencia de únicamente quince carros o menos.
One thing I think, I wanted to make sure, I'm not sure, Bill had said something earlier, I think I've got translated or lost. But it was important to make the distinction between stormwater runoff and spills. You know, these two, he's talking two different, yeah, yeah, so they're both a concern, you know, because of the river.
Other questions coming to you?
Yeah, the color about, last color about the conditions on the prior permit. It talked about the, you know, delineating the line between the town and the property, which to me is the, well, looking at its left line. And so I think somehow that it needs to be you know, clearly marked and, you know, semi-apparently marked, I mean, like, that's would be, would work fine, but that might not be practical, but we need something that really truly and permanently defines the the line, the property line on that left side.
I was there, but I, I don't seem to remember. Is it, I, the, sorry. Is the boundary between the two, is, is it paved? Like, is the back in between the pump station and, you know, the back of seventy?
No, the only paved area is actually the emergency.
Right, exactly.
But there is garden and there is basically grass.
Okay.
Obviously, like, you know.
Yeah.
It separates the town easement
Okay.
from the actual property. There is dirt, there are bushes, there are trees, there, there is not like, other than the driveway, there is really no way someone can drive over the other side.
Oh, this may overlap with the prescriptive or ad mercy easement or whatever, but in my mind, it appears that the surface pavement on the rear of the property is approaching over the town line.
Oh, I have photos of it, I may have it here.
I know, I'm just saying, I want, and before I could act on a special permit, but I, I need to know exactly where that line is.
Where the, where the boundary is between the.
Yeah, I need to know if any of the existing pavement is on town property.
Eh, lo que quiere saber además el vino, eh, si existe territorio de la ciudad de Maynard, eh, es territorio que está pavimentado.
It's the other way around, the, the town is actually does activity in our property in the corner where there is a drop in. We, we basically, there's a drop, so, and there's electrical posts and there's trees. So having said that, the town has, on its own, has gone and paved it and not paved it, uh, bulldozed it and they parked their cars. So having said that, I haven't actually taken any legal action yet, but in fact, the town is out of line now using the property without permission.
You should take that up with the town.
Yes, you know, and just, and just tell the cars. It's not necessary, being a good neighbor is always a good way to go, but having said that the town is actually using the property that it doesn't belong to them rather than us. The pavement is, the driveway is, is actually far away from the town line, which is another fifty feet going to the water easement, water processing, is it a water?
I'll, I'll take a look at that and, and we'll clarify that. This, the, this board, this is not.
Right, but you put this gentleman brought it up.
Right, right.
And so, let me, let me bring this back and make this clear. It sounds like there's many reasons why understanding the, the, the different property boundaries would be very helpful. And it'd help keep town cars off your property too.
And here, no parece ser que debido a todas estas construcciones, la verdad, y malos entendidos, lo ideal sería que tengamos unas, eh, que hacían decliniamiento o limitantes de la, de las propiedades.
So, Bill Mims will reach out to Mr. Bargani and others to clarify.
Y eso lo vamos a hacer sonar, y las personas competentes.
Okay, what else from the board? Any other comments, questions?
And what not related to conditions. The application drawing calls out these signs. One of which doesn't appear to be on the leased property. Actually, is there a call might actually be on town property? So what's up with it?
Line is on town property. It's.
Line number three on this drawing. And I, I don't quite understand why it's part of this application if it's not part of the leased property.
I don't think you're talking about the same sign.
I, I don't think, these, these folks are leasing the back garage, which basically they wanna have a sign above their office space.
On the building?
Which is, which is in the common area where the access road is, that's where they want this.
Can you go to the, the markup in the application? Not that one, the other one.
Go down. That one.
Maybe it's, the red thing that says sign number three, is that part of this application?
Or is that for the future seventy-six powder mill?
That's what the seventy-six.
Okay, so that is not relevant to this application, okay.
So, question, sign number three that's shown here, will you be using sign number three?
Usted estaría usando la señal o el anuncio número tres para su negocio.
Yo lo puse porque yo pensaba que se podía poner un sign. Como que está en la parte de atrás para que la persona pueda ver el negocio.
Hay, hay. I saw that I could use that for my business, so people that goes in the back of the building can see that we are located there. But only we are allowed, we will use that. There's a, there's a former post there, like, maybe was using the passage for a sign. So I thought that I could use it as well.
Is sign, is sign being part of our discussion or is that just a building commissioner?
The sign is on the town property, okay, that, that, the.
Which, which one? Number three or the one that is not numbered on the right of this plan?
I don't, the, the sign that's close to here, I don't know if that's the one, yes, there is an existing sign with a frame that's empty. That is on town property.
Esa que está.
And that's gonna be removed.
Esa está en el, en el territorio, la que usted comenta que es la número tres que, yes.
It's gonna be removed, you said?
That's the, my understanding, D B W would remove, but it's not under our, like, jurisdiction, I think. So Bill Mims just said the Maynard Department of Public Works, he believes may leave that sign.
Es muy posible que el ayuntamiento de Maynard remueva esa, ese señalamiento.
Anything else from the board?
Yeah, so I agree with a couple of things Bill said. You know, it seems to me that a few of the conditions from the past special permit weren't adhered to or weren't followed, I'm not sure if they weren't followed up on. But I think it is important to have a way to delineate where that seventy-five foot buffer is towards the river to prevent cars from being parked. And also about the number of parking spots, I, I'd like a little input from the board on this. It seems like with other recent applications, we've been asking for maybe more comprehensive site plans and I, I think that with the parking concerns and lane line, parking area concerns and proximity to the river, that may that's warranted. We've also, I think, asked about snow removal areas and there's been some input from the Conservation Commission about snow removal areas on impervious versus pervious areas in proximity to the river. And I'm wondering how that needs to be addressed for this application.
Could, could you summarize your comments and then have them translated?
Hay, hay que olvidar, eh, él está diciendo que está de acuerdo con Bill en que debería haber un tipo de de señalización que limite los setenta y cinco pies del edificio eh, y que estén apartados del río, no, lo que ellos quieren es evitar que se llegue a un cierto límite que pueda estar cercano al río, eh, eso pues de competente. Pero se piensa como que a lo mejor deberían de llevar, llevar a cabo alguna opción que ayude a que se delimite el territorio y las limitantes de la propiedad.
In regard to the, about the number of cars. If it was all fenced and delineated and the boundaries were fully understood, I'm not sure I'd care that much about how many cars. Whatever would fit within the fence, basically.
Well, that's what I was wondering about, you know, if there's a value in striving, you know, perhaps within the boundary. But I, I see Bill's point there. But I I see Bill's point there.
Previous board discussions, I would agree cared less about number of cars, cared more to make sure that cars did not encroach towards the river or off of the pavement. Yeah, and a follow up on Chris's, uh, let's give that translator.
Eh, y lo que comentaba es que no les importa tanto como el número de carros que estén estacionados en el área, sino más bien como el alimitante de cercanía por el río, o sea, lo que quieren ellos es como evitar esas de los carros estacionados cerca del río más que el número de carros que puedan caber estacionados cerca de la.
Uh, the reason about snow move was your, it's your question. Um, that's typically, this is a use permit, now the use permit has to be conditions after we met, but that's, uh, snow removal was not, it's typically more of a site plan review, that was why.
Okay.
Officially, this is not a site plan review. But we use site plan to inform us, sure, of course. That's procedurally welcome to things like that, if you want.
Eh, entonces esos no son como, eh, que se utilizar, como a saber que se están poniendo o que están poniendo.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Does it open there? We're going to continue.
Next meeting, it's, um, two weeks.
Would you recommend that, Bill?
I think, well, if we review what has to be done, what I think there's a couple of of items here that that there has to be revisions to the plan that's proposed, which
we're basically, if it's very, I didn't know. Uh, Ms. Marte stated that she wanted to just use the same entrance for and for exiting and entering, correct?
Correct.
So the the site plan, the figure needs to be updated to show that.
Entonces el nuevo plan que traigo será nomás tener que mostrar eso, ¿verdad?, en lugar de marcar la carretera de izquierda como salida.
Pero sí, se, eh, siempre es.
And, uh, in case there improvement of that easement and and that road, eh, that would change things and I would have to bring a new plan.
That's correct, so let's say, let's say two months from now that gets finally figured out and it's true, you can come back to us with the new plan. And you can then show it going both ways.
Entonces, eh, a dos meses de a partir de que se apruebe este este plan actualizado que haga usted, ¿verdad? Puede regresar una vez que ya se haya finalado la otra situación para poder hacer las modificaciones.
But can the board also approve without the access on the site for the time being?
That's what we intend to do.
Right.
So the plan would show entering and exiting from the one.
Yeah.
And that would be the approval for now. If we can confirm the that easement, we can come back and we can change it later.
Yeah, sure.
So hold on. We should remove the signs that we will not be using from this figure.
Tendrán de la mover las señalizaciones.
Would you, instead of showing fifteen parking spots, would you be willing to put, um, concrete jersey barriers at the edge of that and then you can park whatever you want inside of those jersey barriers or something similar?
Usted estaría de acuerdo en que se pongan, eh, como un tipo de barreras en la parte de atrás, que le llaman ellos barreras de hierza. En lugar de limitar el número de carros, nomás que se haga una barrera.
Or or something similar?
If if that's something that the landlord should approve or?
We we don't know, but yes, sorry.
This goes back to the site planning, uh, you guys are going too far, I think, to this, uh, special permit, uh. This jerseys or whatever barrier you put there actually prevents from plowing the snow. Because we do have, this lot is big enough to fit fifty cars back there. So fifteen cars is actually the minimum for their business to be able to operate and take customers' orders and obviously these are body shops, so it's not like, you know, just, uh, fix it and go. So for them to, uh, basically be able to, uh, some, uh, maintain a, uh, business that is whoever they need that fifteen cars, we put it in their lease also.
So fifteen, we can keep the fifteen and show it shown it there? I'm asking we don't need fifteen, we just need to make sure cars don't leave that area.
Right, so they have to basically any barrier that is physically there because, you know, the cars make like your driveway, doesn't mean you're gonna park cars there, but they need to, uh, rotate like a full truck and things that passes through. So it's not just for parking, it's also for plowing the snow, and we can leave it as is.
That's fine.
It has to.
But it's the applicant's choice, of course.
Right, we're gonna mark it, so they have to understand, they know, because we did mark it on the lease. And.
Yeah, just to clarify.
Yeah.
It is maybe not our our job to be so clear about it.
Sure.
But we're also in a situation right now where there are thirty cars back there. So I I but I'm just saying that that's what we're trying to prevent going forward when we have issued the special permit.
Correct, yeah, I understand, but having said that, um, I, like I said, the some of the cars, they've actually got rid of. And then they.
For sure.
They actually, uh, uh, did a lot of work.
And I I appreciate that, but currently there are definitely more than fifteen cars back there.
Yeah, so some of the.
If the case, somebody wants to actually work on those to get.
If I'm gonna vote on this special permit as a yes, I need to know that that line will be maintained. And if it's not, if there's no guarantee, then I either need special permit renewal inspections paid by the tenant every thirty days or I need some other assurance that they will never go past that.
But what I'm saying is, um, with respect with to the board and with the respect to the law, the law doesn't require any of the stuff that, uh, the board is proposing, that's the site plan. This is, this place has been used as a body shop for the past sixty years and they've always been in operation. Today you wanna pass a law, then there's a problem, because this is grandfathered in for this purpose and the town has been collecting taxes on this property for as long as I remember. So you can't come today and then say, put a barrier here, no cars can pass through, like.
I can't vote for a special permit if it doesn't meet the special permit criteria.
Because then I have to take my legal action, because you cannot enforce something that is not enforced.
Mister, mister, mister Bargani, let's not, let's not go.
Let's not go there.
Let's not go there, let's not go there. So one member has stated that we need, that he needs to see the those parking spaces designated some way with markings and those markings need to be maintained and the applicant needs to, um, needs to comply with that space.
Exacto, entonces lo único que ellos quieren asegurarse es que no haya más de quince carros estacionados ahí, porque uno de los miembros de la junta comenta que ha visto treinta carros estacionados ahí y esto se quiere evitar, entonces tienen que haya un compromiso de que únicamente se limite a tener alrededor de quince carros, no treinta.
Una pregunta, eh, los quince carros, pero bueno, a mí treinta carros y de color como dice, el veneno, el veneno.
I I can, I can commit to fifteen, eh, cars in my property, eh, or the one that I'm leasing. Eh, if there's other cars, eh, do some more cars there, probably something that, eh, we can talk to the landlord and see if they belong to other businesses around and not mine.
So.
Okay, you said. Eh, the lease says fifteen cars and that's what I'm committing to how. That's operating.
And in those designated areas shown.
And es a, en esas áreas limitadas hay para los carros, ¿no? Yes.
I, I, Bill, hold on, hold on, Bill, can I show you, you're with, um, would would some type of striping on the pavement be sufficient from your point of view? Or what else would you would you look for for markings?
Uh, it would have to be visible under all conditions, so you know, not just. Because that would materialize.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, I think some sort of non-mountable barrier is appropriate to make sure that nothing's being parked on the other side of that seventy five feet away.
Some sort of what, Chris, I'm sorry?
Just non-mountable barrier with that's a, 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 a high enough curve to where cars can't go over it or a guardrail or a jersey barrier or something that indicates that.
Yeah, you know. I'd be fine with that, although, you know, I might be fine with two two, uh, cement posts defining the line so that somebody, when they're doing inspection, could know exactly where that line was.
But cars can still move around.
Well, yeah, a tow truck has to position a car, but once they the cars are parked at rest, they could not go through that line, but something permanent and more than but only up to the after then to figure out what
what would be a pro.
Like a post or a pole or something.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to see enough posts to where vehicles couldn't go beyond there, I mean, if we have to get snow passed there, I understand that, that makes sense to me.
Right. Well, but let's do this, uh, Bill and Steve, can you please discuss with this team? Um, why, for the, you know, after this meeting, in the coming days and weeks, I think you both, you understand what the board is referring to. I think that's an easy discussion to get through later on. I think, I think the one thing is clear, but hold on, I'm gonna give you a moment to catch up.
Eh, entonces, eh, ellos por lo pronto van a poder avanzar en esto, eh, van a dejar que esa discusión eh, de poner una señalización o algún tipo de barrera especial que le deje a los carros a pasar de esa línea que está cercana al río. Entonces eso se podrá conversar con Bill y Steve en los próximos años.
I think the board just made it clear that they want a permanent, uh, boundary.
A marker, yeah. Something that's gonna be. But but I also want the board to understand that when you bring a disabled car, you bring it on back of the tow truck, so these tow trucks need to maneuver. It's not just, you know, putting barriers there. It's almost like having a backyard that basically has a conservation point. But if you walk over it, doesn't mean you destroyed it, it's just.
No, I I think what they're saying, that that I don't think they're talking about.
I want them to understand to park on the pavement, if you look at the pavement, if you've been there, which you have, uh, the pavement itself is 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 a good indicator, so they shouldn't be on the dirt, they shouldn't be on the grass.
Right, because they're on the dirt right now, right, that's why I'm concerned, that's that's.
So that's why they're they're not in compliance, so they shouldn't be in compliance. And the pavement itself is actually ends, uh, other than the the driveway that goes further back, the actual pavement ends, uh, even before seventy five feet.
Well, that that and that may be.
Well, that's that itself is a good indicator.
I I think, I think the way, if I was in your position at this point, I think what I would tell this board right now is that if you're willing to establish, uh, with, Chris, what you call it, a non.
Yeah, like non-mountable.
Yeah, we can put some states.
For seventy five, seventy five feet from the existing building, it's from the old permits, and so it's it's very clear. And I think if the board understands that and expects that, that is what you're looking for, that's what I.
The other thing I was gonna say, that if if it is true that the pavement stops before seventy five feet.
Yeah.
Show that to me and then I will say, as if 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 I can look at it and I say, okay, everything's on pavement and I know that that's seventy five feet, then that's fine.
Exactly, I think, uh.
Um, that this plan doesn't.
Phil is bigger, I mean, um, he knows, uh, that the pavement stops, uh, at a certain position. I don't think it's even seventy five feet, I haven't measured it, but I don't think it's seventy five feet. Having said that, like I said, the lot is big enough to fit fifty cars, these folks are asking for fifteen.
I have no problem with the fifteen.
I just, I already approved the special permit all along and this place has been on operation for sixty five years.
Okay, I'm calling time, um, this is the applicant's hearing, so if you could, please update the applicant.
Eh, sí, o sea, ya ahorita, eh, la discusión es más acerca de ponerse limitantes de setenta y cinco. El dueño del lugar dice que también muchísimo más, hasta cincuenta carros, pero usted únicamente está solicitando quince espacios. Entonces eso en algún momento van a tener que definirlo con el propietario del lugar cómo se va a limitar esa esa instancia, ¿no?
Um, so I'm instructing Bill to help you out, to figure this out.
Y Bill va a ser la persona que lo va a asesorar en este aspecto.
But would that be just because because one of the premises that I'm gonna work this out on is would it be acceptable to the board if Mr. Bargami was to place stanchions or at at intervals where you still could maneuver in and out of them?
Yeah, I think what the.
Not, you know, let me finish, please, and not fence. And I'm talking about, but but it clearly denotes it regardless of the weather, would that be something at seventy five foot mark that this board would consider consistently what you're asking me to?
That sounds about right.
I, if the board is okay, I think what we can do is put markers and then we also have like, just like, uh, a tape that goes across, so it's visible to the eye, but then again, if the tow truck comes, they can drop it and then move it and then put it back, obviously, not to park seventy five feet further back.
Let me put it this way, we don't need the lines, we need the corners.
That's what I just mentioned, like you put markers.
So that's.
And then there would be like, um, a tape or something, it'd be like, obviously that they have to understand.
Yeah.
And, uh, that gives them enough space for parking cars.
We've talked about this enough, I I think everyone understands. You should have the the proposal next time.
Yeah.
Entonces, claro, ya estamos de acuerdo, y estoy gonna.
You want to go to the next.
Anything else from the board? Um, any questions?
Preguntas que no pueden.
Which should be continued between still?
Well, that's a good question, I would say typically, yes. I am not going to be available on the twenty second. Uh, we do already have a petition. I may, uh, I may be, I may not be available. But but somebody will be, we we can have somebody cover, but it is. I, um.
Steve, you're up.
We have a new assistant top planner.
That's right. Okay. One day I have the.
Let's, let's continue, I think we should continue to the twenty second.
Yeah, okay. Okay, and, uh, so we can meet um, maybe this week or early next week about the plan.
Entonces, pues se puede empezar con ellos, con la civilidad, para hablar sobre el plan.
I will. And we and we will set a meeting.
Should we wait until that, um, approval to be in our, in this, in the place working in our personal cars? Not commercially, like.
Well, they have some commitments, they already have in the garage, including their own cars, that basically the investments, uh.
So that's, that's for the, so that is for the building commissioner for the town of Maynard to determine? I can't answer that, but Bill Nemser might be able to.
Bill le va a comentar más a porque no es la junta de planeación, sino ya la la comisión. Bill, you have a comment, más porque no es la junta de planeación, sino ya la la comisión, la ya.
Oh, what I would like to do while before we we continue, true, quick, I know. You, Bill, did you hear the question though?
Yes.
Okay, can can they're asked.
I can't answer that, that'd be something that that is, we talked about tomorrow. Um this board at this point in his hearing is um does not have that authority.
So so Bill said she can reach out and talk about it tomorrow.
But mañana cuando hables con Bill, le puede hablar más al respecto porque están nos.
But but no work, to be clear, there's no work that requires a special permit should be done.
Pero ya no hay trabajo necesario para el permiso especial.
So but what I just want to be clear, it would be done with this. Um the plan, we're gonna work, we'll work together, you can you can start with a plan. I suggest you work with Mr. Borgami to decide how it's gonna be delineated, so everything, everybody's on the same page when we come in. In two weeks. Um I also um I will do what I can find about the easement, I can't promise, I'll I'll research that. You need to do that too as well and see if you find.
Believe I have it.
Okay, let's work to be safe and with the idea that we wanna get them in business as soon as possible, let's assume we don't have it. And if we do, that's great, but I would not, I look, that's a smart way to do it with that. Okay, can you pause there?
Entonces, son dos puntos los que están lentes, uno es que se hable con el señor propietario. Acerca de esas eh eh señalizaciones que van a poner en la parte trasera. El señor también va a conseguir el acuerdo del ISMAN que le llaman en inglés. Que se llama pues concesión, verdad, del uso de esa carretera.
Now, the only thing that the the only other thing I have uh with from this board question is Phil's about. Uh we wanna know if there's existing pavement on town property, I'll I'll see what I can find on that, I'll I'll try to get that information here in just a second. Um so.
There there is a ten yes as far as I.
I.
I I I know there isn't.
Sorry, too many, too many discussions occurring, please, you have the priority. Good, yeah, okay.
Uh and then the the last question I have, and and this will, you you need to do this with Mr. Borgami as well, on your plan. That you're revising, you're planning. Decide, uh somebody on the board asked for delineation of the leased area between the properties. So, does I understand that correctly? So so that this will be the appropriate place to put it, yes?
Yes.
That, you understand, and that you probably should work with Mr. Borgami, okay?
Y el señor Borgami usted tiene que simplemente estudiar con dos tipos de lineamientos de la calidad.
And tomorrow, um.
Is that it, Bill?
That is it, so without April twenty-second. And I will have, regardless of what I'm hearing, I will have worked with the.
We would, we would then, we will continue this hearing and meet again on April twenty-second, that we're next meeting.
La próxima junta con la junta de planeación será el veintidós.
And if you plan on Thursday, maybe Thursday, maybe we leave here.
All right, I'll make a motion to continue this hearing to April twenty-second at seven P M.
One second, bud.
All in favor for the continuance, please raise your hand. It's five zero to continue, thank you. That's it.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you so much.
Cynthia, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you guys.
Bye bye.
Thanks, yeah, I'll come.
You can see a lot of it. You, I need a beer.
Yeah.
You got one now, we gotta need to you here.
Oh, that was a cheap shot.
All right, let's open up the public hearing for the zoning text amendment, accessory dwelling units, I'm doing this, huh?
Can I just make sure to prove it?
You can.
There's some comments first.
Um who's giving us, Billy, are you bringing one of them? Uh Mr. Crenshaw.
Sweet.
Did he open it?
I. No.
Can I open it?
Who, sure?
Like, hey, you're in charge here.
All right, all right.
I'll wait.
I think um when we do explain it, Bill, if you, it'd just be our.
Good.
Oh, I was just thinking for what the changes for um, you know, for particularly uh Mark and Chris have never done a um. We either did.
Yeah.
Forget it.
Yeah, they're.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
They're parents.
Forget it.
What did I not do?
You did, you already went, we already went through some bylaws, how about you?
Yeah.
There's already. And this one, well, I'll let I'll let Bill maybe get it.
Yeah, we we changed the headings on everything.
Yeah.
Nice, fine.
No, I didn't have.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
They're good people, out of all.
Great.
And they do like every language in the world.
Really? Could you give their number to the schools? That would be great.
Then we'll have a.
They're not great about that. That's all I'll say.
We were talking about it.
Thank you.
Rick Asman. Well, he didn't do any heavy lifting, but he did come up with the idea.
I hope you don't have a problem.
It already.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Because.
It was, yeah, so.
He opened it, we weren't paying.
I already opened the hearing.
Wow, it was just an interesting hearing.
And then I walked away.
I couldn't stage the coup and no one, I mean.
This is hearing.
Yeah, but they wanted, they thought you wanted to go to P B.
I opened up the hearing so you could proceed with them.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so this uh. This article is to amend the accessory family dwelling unit. Uh pages that we did a year ago. Um and we did it in May and then come July or August, the state. Came out with their own set of laws. And so this is being updated to be consistent with the state. And the state decided a set of rules that. We have to abide to and there are some things that we had previously been trying to do that they would not allow anymore. So basically this, as far as the section two, the amendment and all the texts, it's everything exactly how the state requires it with two exceptions. One is that we continue to prohibit the use of those accessory dwelling units for short-term rentals. And also that we prohibit there being more than one accessory dwelling unit on a parcel. So those two pieces of our our existing language stay, everything else is effectively being modified to meet their new state law.
Um did. Why why are we crossing on the table, why are we crossing on the X's and putting G's?
Because central business and industrial. Do not allow for single-family zoning, the single-family housing. Except already existing non-conforming. Uh structures, so. We're gonna have the planning board decide case by case whether it's appropriate, and we're talking about very, very, very few lots.
But that's also a change from our previous one, right?
But I believe that that was at the with discussion from the building inspector.
And you.
Whatever.
Um questions, comments? Bill, are there any? Any public comments?
There is nobody.
To provide public comment.
Everybody here. Have we had any applications yet for CDU?
Not, well, I don't know, they wouldn't come through me, I'd have to ask Rick, Rick would probably tell me, but. That's a good question.
Yeah, because they're allowed currently.
They're allowed currently, yeah, right.
Just without.
I I should ask him to let me know, I'm curious.
Yeah, that's right, that's the whole point, that's the whole point.
But now you guys are changing, then we're gonna get a couple of special permits, both potentially.
Oh, yeah. What's our action here tonight, Bill?
The board's action, I think would be to take a vote if they're going to recommend approval to the town meeting, which is coming up.
Uh I'll make a motion to recommend the law article for town meeting on May nineteen, two thousand twenty-five. So. All in favor for recommending the town meeting, please raise your hand. It's five zero to recommend the town meeting.
Thank you.
We have a motion to close the hearing.
One second, bud.
All in favor of closing the hearing, please raise your hand. Five zero to close for the hearing. Uh Bill, let's get meeting minutes unless you really want them, but. You really want them?
Oh, I've been, I've been, I've been tired, I'll do it next time.
We'll skip meeting minutes. Updates.
Do you have any funding policies?
Yeah, I don't want to talk about that.
Okay. And E-MOD?
E-MOD, I gotta meet up, I I I have a um. One of my pen pals didn't respond to me. No, but we're gonna be, we're gonna maybe meet the next couple of weeks, because. But I know, we're 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 just, we have a couple of tweaks we wanna make, basically, uh to the our rural district. Uh Bill and. Working with me, and then the goal, as we discussed, I think at last week, we're gonna have a plan, I said. I do have um. One other piece of news that would be of interest to this board is that one. Sorry, two, what was Adam's stat, he's two-four pattern, right?
Yes.
Yeah, two-four pattern, uh Conservation Commission, we've been seeing it finally. So that would be, that's um official, so.
Good, good, good to know. I forgot about that.
Yeah, well, it's good to know for a couple of reasons, but um all around script.
Are they intending to proceed now?
I have nothing official from the applicant, if it's it's possible that I don't know if he's gonna go forward with it or another party's gonna go. But I think that um it's been very, it's been a long road for that one, you know, and so it'll be, it'll be good. And I expect uh. Uh we'll be. We've got uh one summer street is in Hoppers, you know, it's not in yet, but it will be, I sent you all permission on that um. I did a thorough job I could with a um scope on that, so I I said that.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Remind me what happened to the CPC buzzing that that what they will put in a while back? Did we get approval, did we not get approval, did that, did that not happen yet?
Who's that for?
Coolish Park?
No, that that's great. For the park?
Yeah, Coolish, Coolish Park.
Oh, it's on the war.
It is, yeah, okay, I just, I couldn't remember it, but it got approved, still got approved?
Well, they gotta buy CPC, if you see it voted on, it's right, I think, right.
And and it also the HPP, not the HPP, the um. R H S O.
Yeah.
It says grants update.
Oh, yeah, I did, uh I do, all the grants, my my grants are are um. All teed up, ready to go for May one, uh we've got. Our powder mill, uh hopefully we get that, that would be the um the uh construction plans. For um pedestrian. Cycling access there, that's teed up, uh I found another uh source for our housing production plan funding that um. Has indicated they're going to be, help us fund that, I'll get that straight to the next. That'll be May one also, so hopefully with that done at the time, and that would be good, so that's that's it. Look at those yawns.
Yeah.
One, two, four yawns.
I didn't, yeah, I.
No, I did.
Like this all the time.
That's it, guys. Thank you. And the minutes, we'll just do next time.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Second. I'll do the closing, please raise your hand. It's five zero, seven zero.